Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Welcome this evening. Got a pretty busy schedule tonight, so we want to get right into it. We have a large number of pop-ups. These are going to just be short little things. Some of these are with reference to votes that will go on, on the formal docket tonight, just kind of a refresher of where we are since a number of these items have been a little bit since, since they've been in front of council. And then after the, and then some of these others are, are things that you all have, have requested. So we'll address some of the issues that have come up in previous meetings. After that.
Go ahead, Chip. After you.
Okay. After that, we've got Steve Hawkes is here with our public consulting group to talk about the foster care assessment that we went through with the public consulting group. Thank them for all being here this evening. Thank you all for, for being here. They're going to give an overview of sort of their firm and then talk a little bit about the methodology and then, and with the recommendations from the foster care assessment. We have Rob Cross here from Virginia Arts Festival. And I believe Anthony couldn't make it this evening, so Rob will fill in admirably for Anthony as well. Only double duty. He's going to talk to us, first of all, with an update on the Addicts 100 and how that went, and then also talk a little bit about the upcoming Virginia Arts Festival. Then we'll end it this evening with two items for closed session. Sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Well, first, the first thing I want to say is that this is Black History Month, as we all know. And it's two individuals that we should never forget, and that's Herbert Collins and James Gay, because they fought all the way to the Supreme Court to create the ward system. And I've said this in the past, without the ward system, none of us at this table would be here. Tommy, out of those of you, you know how Randy had to fight and he still, you know, couldn't get a seat at the table. And I think the fellows who ran this, ran the city at that time, the ULC's turnip, would have been the one who would have succeeded Betty Howell. And for the West Side, there was a guy, he's deceased now, Ewing Ottinger. So I think we should all, you know, think about Gay and Collins. If there are those of you sitting here who believe that you would be here, you know, but I can promise you, you would not have been. The last time we had this discussion, Dr. Whibley was the only one, you know, of the upper crust, you know, who would have ruled up society. And I guess my other question, Mr. Mayor, and to Chip and to the Attorney, I had requested a reconsideration of the vote for the lots that we are giving Bryn Shore. And the only reason that I would like to reconsider and talk about is that I don't believe with our budget challenges that we have, that we can give them delay, you know. SL Nussbaum paid about $400,000 when they put up the St. Paul's apartment. And so I think we should even get, you know, $400,000 for each of those sites, because we are not in a position, you know, where we do the budget, we tell the, the department heads and managers to go back and, and trim the budget. But here, we're leaving money on the table. So I hope we can have that discussion and see if we can get some money from Bryn Shore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, you, I can offer a few comments. So, so we haven't, we're not finished with, with Bryn Shore yet on that negotiation. So you're right, in the ballpark, I mean, so SL Nussbaum is about a 4.43 acre site, Nussbaum paid 1.25 for, for the site. So I think, you know, that's sort of where we are in negotiating with Bryn Shore. As you know, the, the vote that took place conveyed a lease term to NRHA, so, so we'll establish that. But Bryn Shore also understands that we're interested in some money upfront as well as to the lease.
We need it.
Yeah, I agree, agree. Yeah, and so I, I will obviously keep council updated as, as those move forward.
Thanks.
We're just not final on that yet.
All right. Thank you.
Council?
No, I was, it's a separate.
All right.
If there's time at the end, before we go into close, Councilman Johnson and I would like to just ask, let council know of a, a decision that the gaming committee made yesterday. And I, I don't know if Kirk Kraus is going to be able to come up, but have you seen him?
He's not here today.
Okay. Well, he said he may come up, so we, it'd be real quick, and it's actually money that he has, and we just wanted to let you know, it's going to help us with some stuff.
We'll get an update before we go into close.
Perfect. No problem. That shouldn't be a problem. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, so tonight, I want to start with, before we begin, a personnel announcement. So after 17 years of very dedicated public service to the city, as many of you know, Eric Tucker, who's been our Director for Real Estate, will be leaving the, this city. He's served in various executive roles. He's been the Assistant Director of Utilities, Assistant Director of General Services, and then he's also most recently been the Acting Director for the Office of Real Estate. The good news, I think, in any of these situations, though we're losing Eric, is a valuable resource in the city. He, he's staying in the region, and so someone else gets a valuable resource. So, you know, the, the, the regional person in me still is okay, I guess, somewhat with that result, though bittersweet on losing him in the city. So, you know, please join me, Eric, please stand. Thanks so much for your work. And then, obviously, that leaves a vacancy now in, in real estate. So the, what, what we've decided to do is take someone very close already to, to the real estate piece, thankfully Trista Phaton, who is here this evening. Trista's going to serve as the Acting Director for Real Estate. She's been, she's, she's been with the city for 12 years. She's been in various departments, planning, she was in general services as well, recreation parks in Oprah's, oh, I'm sorry, she was in Public Works, and then recreation parks and open space. And really, Trista, since I've come on board for the last six years, has been liaising with Eric, Jared, and George, and kind of a group we've put together to help speed up the process of development. And so this, this is a pretty natural move for Trista. I don't think we're going to lose a step with this. And so thank Trista for stepping up and appreciate that. All right? Any questions? Move on? All right. So moving on, the question came up, I believe it was from Councilman Smigal, couple sessions ago, a couple council meetings ago, about the small cell wireless towers and sort of where they were going and who owned what. And as it turns out, there's an app for that. And so Frida Burns is here with our Rite of Works group to show you the webpage that we actually have set up to, to show you right of ways for the small cell wireless facilities. Thanks for being here.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council. It's my pleasure to present our small cells webpage. If you go to the main page of norfolk.gov and type in small cell or 5G, your first result will be this page. It consists of a, a map that is broken down by the various 5G franchisees that we have in the city. And underneath the map is some information about what are small cells and examples of what they look like. Why are we installing them? Gives an explanation of why we're, why we are installing them in the city, what our process is for small cells, and it gives a list of the franchisees that we have awarded so far that you voted upon and granted so far. And also just some helpful links and information. Currently Verizon is at the forefront, having installed a great number of small cells in Norfolk, and these are all 5G, and this is all in support of 5G. Kim, if you click on the, the larger map. What we have established on our website is a link to an outside webpage in Google, so anyone can access this from Google. If they click on one of the dots, a red dot in particular, they'll see information on where the small cell is located, who applied for the permit, geographic coordinates, how tall the pole is, what they, how tall, if there was an existing pole, what that pole height was, and what the new pole height will be. Also, if you have a Google Drive, you can click on the Google Drive link and see the actual schematic of the small cell, which includes some of the shielding information that we require for small cells. We ask that they try to make them as inconspicuous as possible, so that they don't, they're just not ugly, being sitting on top, up on top of poles. We want them to be painted. We want some of the boxes that they have on the poles to be painted to kind of match the surroundings. And so that, those are the small cells. Right now, we have about 200 total in the city, and they're growing every day. We're issuing permits on small cells every day. What you will see, I will say with Verizon, we did make an exception, exception for them. They were in the race to small, to launch 5G. They installed a lot of their infrastructure, but they didn't go back, and they haven't gone back yet, and completed the installation where they haven't gone back and maybe painted a box or painted some wires, but that'll happen in the weeks to come.
So how does our 5G concentration look like relative to the other folks in the region and along the East Coast? Where, where does more expand? Do you have an idea? I don't, I don't know that they've given you that, I'm just curious.
Um, we are at the forefront. We have more 5G small cells than any of the other Hampton Road cities. I can't speak to Northern Virginia, but the Hampton Road cities were at the forefront because they started with us installing small cells back in 2015, 2016. We came out of the gate with guidelines and rules where other cities didn't have those, and were calling us to get that information, so we were able to get ahead of the curve. And Verizon's been a great partner. AT&amp;T's also been very busy installing small cells, as has a company called Mobility, which they sell their, their stuff to Sprint. So we have, we have a lot of infrastructure in Norfolk already, and that's going to lead to better competition, better pricing. And we're one of Verizon's first 30 5G cities in the nation, which is pretty awesome, because we weren't included in the beginning. And there's an article on the webpage, if you go back to the webpage, there's an article on the, on that webpage, Norfolk in the News, that talks about that.
Mr. Smigal?
Yep. So I was just looking at the map, I noticed that Sprint, interestingly enough, seems to be focusing more on the north side of the city and along major roads or interstate, whereas Verizon seems to be concentrated around higher density commercial area with downtown. So is there, have they expressed, as Verizon expressed, that they're looking at moving? Because when we met with Verizon, when they told us they were going to roll this out, they actually said that they were going to target some neighborhoods that are, that don't have internet, fast internet, or competition with Cox. And I know that that's not really the 5G they're looking at right now, it's more mobile devices. And I just, I not seeing Verizon spreading out throughout the city is just concerning to me.
The, the plan is for them to spread out, they started with, with their hub, and their hub is more based closer to downtown, so they're coming out from the hub and spreading out from there. But the plan is to deploy citywide. We have a number of applications for areas outside of downtown, outside of, they're on the west side of the city, in East Beach area. It's just a matter of having a pole nearby, and you know, East Beach is completely underground, so they have to have a location where they can install a pole. If they can install a pole, they have to, let's say, identify a, a pole type. So for instance, they can install a streetlight, because those are allowed, so they can install a streetlight and put a small cell on that. That takes a little bit longer to permit.
Hey, do you know the distance that a pole covers?
About 500 feet, about 5,000 feet.
Okay, Ms. Grace?
So you said you have applications for other parts of the city, so when you have some spare time, can you send me what you have for Super War VII with regard to applications, so that I can be aware of what is, what is coming?
Yes.
In the, in the Super War, because it does kind of look all concentrated and not really spread out with Verizon, although the other companies are, you know, spreading out a little bit more. But I'd just like to see what they're proposing.
Yes, and again, there, it's not just, these are just the ones that are in the right of way. They're also coming in, into planning with small, small cell proposals for private property or private city-owned property, and those are going through planning at this time.
So let me ask you this question.
The whole, the plan is to combine the map at some point.
Okay, so they're, they're approaching privately owned businesses to put small cell towers. There, is there a financial incentive for those small businesses to, that the small businesses have for working with Verizon?
Yes, they, they pay for, they pay a lease, they have a lease agreement, and they offer up a lease to those individuals that meet their criteria. And if they decide that that's a great location for them to have a small cell, they will negotiate with the property owners.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Doyle?
It's also my understanding, Frida, that Verizon initiated their implementation near higher ed institutions, academic institutions, healthcare institutions, kind of along that corridor, and that was again another reason for their location.
Yes, that was another reason for, but it was also, also it was coming out of their hub, which is closer to downtown. That's just where it happens to be, where the infrastructure happens to, to initiate.
Okay. Ms. Whitelands?
So the, I just, Governing Magazine had a whole series on 5G, and they just pulled up the article. It's, 5G has an effective range of 1,000 feet versus 4G, which is 50,000 feet, but the difference is 4G could only support 6,500 devices in a square mile, 5G can support a million devices. So it's much more concentrated, it's a shorter distance, but much more concentrated, much faster. So it's just a sort of.
It still has a greater capacity for phones. So even though it's a smaller distance, you can have more phones. So if you have, say, when you're at the football game and you're losing your signal, it's because there's so many people with their phones trying to use their phones. What's, what these small cells, what they do is it provides additional, more or less, they're like additional towers or additional capacity, so that everybody can use their phone and interact and take photos and.
Yeah, so I, I think some of the, it is, yeah, it's an economic development opportunity, and, and with this, though, because it is a smaller focus area for this, I, I think Brookings has written a couple articles on this and some others, very nice, well thought out articles about equity, about technology equity. And, and, you know, I know you're, you're looking at that, saying, this is actually for a city, this dispersion is, is, is pretty good. This is a lot worse in, in some other cities. And so I think, you know, Frida's group and, and in fact, just the, the providers that we're dealing with deserves some credit. Now, we can surely do better than this, and we hope we do better than this moving forward, right? But this is, this is pretty good in terms of, of spreading out, not just being concentrated in a downtown or concentrated around a university, but we've got more work to do on that. And I think that for us, I think internally is sort of the next piece of this, is we get new folks asking and requesting for, for locations.
And we're starting to look into new developments, like the St. Paul's revitalization area. Our plan is to take the 90% drawings, present those to the wireless telecoms and say, hey, here's an opportunity, what would you like to, to do here?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for doing that.
All right. All right. So she's got another issue, though. She's not done. She's got an encore presentation. So upstairs, you guys are going to vote on R13, which is some fee cleanup language in the code. It's a little arcane, it's nothing major, but I thought it'd be helpful if, if Frida just talks a little bit about exactly what you all are, are voting on to clean up there.
Long and short of it, it's the difference between a cut in the road and building an entirely brand new street. The cost for a cut in the road, we're differentiating the cost of that from building an entirely brand new street. There are lots of new developments with brand new streets that are coming into the city, and staff has discovered that we need a fee to sort of cover those costs. That's not the cut in the street fee, it needs to be its own fee.
You mean cutting the street like a curb cut?
Yes.
As opposed to?
Let's say if someone's doing a utility cut and they just cut a four by four cut in the road, that's one fee, and that's what we're deserting tonight. That fee, it's already been in the city code, it's already there. And this new fee is if you're building an entirely new street. There's never a street there, there's nothing there but an open field, you're building a new development, and you're putting in new roads. How much does that cost?
Okay. Thank you, Frida.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I want to call up Lenny Newcomb with Planning to talk about PH3, which is on your agenda upstairs. This is the vacation of an alleyway located at Front Street.
Yes. This is very quick, very brief. This is an unnamed alley. I'm going to go around.
No, you're, okay, do that time.
I'm under the door.
Harbor Heights is over here.
We're going through the additions, the expansions. Several years ago, they talked about putting a parking lot on the other side of Colley Avenue. Front Street runs east and west, Colley goes north and south. This is an area where we had an undeveloped, unnamed alley in through here in order to develop their parking lot, and we're going to close that. Do we have the next one? And the trees that are there are going to be preserved. Parking will be down here towards the Front Street side. And it's being done because, as you know, as they go through the construction of the addition, they've lost all of their garage parking, and there's a lot of off-lot parking going on. So this became more important to them right now than it was before.
Liddy, you celebrated a birthday, is that true?
I'm sorry?
Celebrating a birthday.
I celebrated one yesterday.
I understand, so although you came with the city back in the 1600s, but.
Roundabout, yes.
Happy birthday, Liddy.
Thank you.
Only because of your institutional knowledge, that's all.
Icon. That's what everybody calls him.
Legend. All right, Dr. Filer.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next, I want to talk, call up Steve Kirkland, the Executive Director of Nauticus. First, great event the other day, I think we all would agree, this is a mighty menace occasion for us with, with the deal with Carnival. Stephen's going to talk a little bit about that and provide a little update overall of Nauticus.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dr. Filer. So we had a great day on Thursday over the half moon. It was, it was, I think, right on point, and it's really, this cruise news has gotten the, sort of the community talking and has been to talk to town over the weekend, which is really good. I, I will tell you that my conversations with Carnival before and subsequent to that, they're bullish on Norfolk. They are, they are, they are pumped up about this relationship. And it's also important to note that their sales are really strong out of, out of the city. They wouldn't be increasing their sales if they weren't. So a, a couple of things, you all appreciate your consideration this evening, you all will be voting to formalize this agreement with Carnival, and in essence, this agreement does a couple of things. One, it locks Carnival into a five-year commitment, so this is kind of a first of its kind thing for us. There are three one-year extensions, options for that commitment, so this is from 2021 to 2025, with the possibility of extending out to 2028. The other thing that this agreement does this evening is it allows Carnival to bring in this huge ship, the Carnival Magic, 130,000 tons, 1,100 feet, 4,000 passengers, quite literally the largest ship to ever sail out of Norfolk. And it does that through making it possible to, to do that because of a gangway, and we've talked about that before, but this investment in a gangway is critical to this, and so that's critical to this piece as well. There's three things I would recommend that you think about as you're, as you're thinking about this gangway, three things to consider. Number one, a gangway is a need to, it's not a nice to. It is as essential to a cruise terminal as a jetway is to an airport. It is the sole means of ingress egress for these cruise ship passengers, so it is an essential piece of equipment. Number two, our current gangway was built in 2005, 2006, delivered here in 2007. It is at the end of its life cycle, quite literally, it is not fully operational today. My big push is to get it ready for spring season. It's, you know, subjected to maritime climates and saltwater and rain and wind and all that kind of stuff, so it is nearing the end of its life cycle. And the third thing I would ask you to consider is, this gangway is not for Carnival Cruise Line. It will make it possible for them to bring in that vessel, but this gangway gives us maximum flexibility to continue growing this cruise ship program. Honestly, today, a, a complete separate line I'm talking to about bringing a ship in as a port call, and they've got some restrictions with an overhang of their lifeboats, and they've got some restrictions with the height. So it is an ongoing situation, but this, this gangway will allow us to keep up with this industry. These ships have grown and are growing exponentially since 2006, and for us to stay in this game, we've got to kind of grow with them. So with that, if there are any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thanks very much.
We need to have our next retreat on us.
On, on the Carnival Magic? Next retreat? Okay. I think Martin's already signed up for like five cruises already or something. Yeah. It's, it's exciting, it really, and it was a great event, and it's, it's an exciting time for that, for the cruise program. It's a big thing for the city, and we're, and we're the only one, right? I mean, we're the only one that can pull this off, so it, it's terrific. I think that's 4,000 passengers on that Carnival Magic, which is enormous. I mean, I'm not sure we have too many things going on downtown that, you know, bring 4,000 people at one point in time, so that's, that's pretty impressive.
Incredible visual from the town.
Yes, it is.
It really is.
Yeah. Okay, next, Amy Imman, she's going to pop up and talk a little bit about where we are on that Vision Zero process.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council members, and Dr. Filer. I really appreciate having the time, just to give you a brief update on where we are on some of our Vision Zero strategies. We're very grateful for this council's leadership in, in being very serious about the strategies and, and our approach in making zero our goal for any, any fatalities as it relates to traffic, especially concerning our, our pedestrians and those who, who bike, take public transportation, scooter, and use other modes of transportation. So Vision Zero, really zero is the goal. That's, this is sort of our, our first step towards branding what Vision Zero is, and many of you know, and I receive, I receive emails and requests from you all, from, from your neighborhoods, from citizens, to have speed studies, and, and those are really, those are, that's a great strategy in terms of our first step towards achieving a zero goal of, of any, any fatalities. In 2016, we actually conducted a pilot study of where we went in to the, to the Meadowbrook neighborhood and did a speed reduction, and from 25 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour. And we did that, we used a methodology that's approved by the Federal Highway Administration, and it really looks at criteria such as the, you know, the level of speeding, the speed that are, that are, is existing, and also looking at any crashes and the roadway geometry, are there any line of sight issues, are there a lot of, is there a lot of parking, on-street parking, et cetera? Those are the factors that really go into, to looking at, is it, is a particular roadway or an area eligible for a speed reduction? And, and they did that, and John Stevenson, of course, in our department, is wonderful, and he has conducted numerous speed studies, and, and he did this, and what he found, he did a before and after study, and what he found was, it did indeed help to, help to slow those who were really excessively speeding. So it did help, help to curb that. So we feel it is a, it is a very good strategy for us to take in the neighborhoods as a first step towards rolling this out. So what we'd like to do is, is have a, a neighborhood speed reduction program, and we've developed some parameters that we would assess the eligibility of a neighborhood to, to, to slow the speeds. Number one is, has it been requested by a neighborhood? And we have received numerous requests, so those are at the forefront. Those rise to the top of our priority in terms of implementing this program. We will continue to use the Federal Highway Administration methodology to validate that certainly a speed reduction to 20 miles an hour is, is appropriate. The Department of Transit, our, our Traffic Operations Center, they will be responsible for going out and actually removing the old signs, marking the old signs, and putting up the new signs. Our strategy will be that we, we address a neighborhood at a time. We don't want to go in and just do one street at a time, but we really, we, we address a neighborhood, work with the neighborhood, and, and have it be implemented successfully. Yes, ma'am?
When you say old signs and new signs, what are you referencing? You said that they'll go out and they'll take down?
Old signs.
And they'll put up.
Signs, so old speed signs. So we're going from a 25 mile, we're recommending going from a 25 mile an hour speed limit. So we're going from a 25 mile, we're recommending going from a 25 mile an hour speed limit to a 20 mile an hour speed limit. So we'll need to go out in a neighborhood and actually, you know, mark those signs and replace those signs with the new signs. So we'll do it in a, in a manner that makes sense for people. But certainly, there is a cost associated with that, of course. But those costs are VDOT reimbursable. So we're happy about that. It just, it will take our staff time from traffic operations to implement this program. But we feel like it's a good use of our, of our staff resources.
Is that something that a summer intern could assist with? A group, maybe of summer interns that maybe have, they're maybe college age, if you will?
Potentially.
Majors in whatever that area would be that you would major in for that?
To go out and help with that? Potentially, yeah. Absolutely. And we would, you know, we would welcome that opportunity. I think we have a program in place that, that might be something that, that folks could learn how to do the speed studies and how we actually implement the program and then actually be part of, of an implementation. That's, that's a great idea. Now, council, council will be required to pass an ordinance, a speed reduction ordinance. And again, we'll do this one neighborhood at a time. So you'll know in advance that this is happening. In our rollout timeframe, we'd like to begin this, we're hoping to have the first ordinance to you all by April with an actual implementation of the May-June timeframe. So we've, we've already spent quite a bit of time analyzing the neighborhoods throughout the city where we think are eligible and appropriate to implement this, this new program. We are looking around the, around the city. So we're not targeting one area. We really do want to find it. And we do have neighborhoods actually that have requested this throughout the city. So we feel really, we feel very good about that. So we will start with the smaller neighborhoods. The larger neighborhoods, we want to get our lessons learned before we start working on more complex areas. We're not forgetting about the arterials such as Granby Street. We know there are requests for speed reductions on Granby. The major arterials, they do have a little more implication of reducing speeds corridor-wide. So we need a slightly different approach to addressing those speed reductions. But we're not ignoring it. And we will continue to work with neighborhoods to implement other tools in our toolbox to help with, with speeding and other issues that we have as it relates to safety. We also have, we're also looking at speed reduction in alleys. So we're working with the city attorney's office right now to try to be able to limit the speeds in an alleyway to 10 miles an hour. So, so we hear the concern about the speeding from, from you all, from the city, from the citizens. And we are working to address the issues from, in a comprehensive manner. We feel like this is a very good approach, first step. We know that every mile of reduced vehicle speed results in a 6% decrease in, in traffic fatalities. That's pretty significant. The lower speeds, of course, result in less severe consequences, less severe injuries, especially if it includes, involves a pedestrian, a cyclist. Higher speeds, as we all know, require longer stopping distances. So at the lower speed, we can stop and be more reactive if a child or something steps out into the roadway. And this is very interesting, but slight statistic. A pedestrian has a 90% chance of survival if hit by a vehicle at just under 20 miles, at 19 miles an hour. 70% survival, survival rate if it is hit at 25 miles an hour. And less than 20% if it's, if it's survival rate if it's, if someone is hit at 31 miles an hour. So that's fairly significant. I do want to acknowledge Lori Crouch and Kelly Straub. And her group have been really working with us on outreach to get our Vision Zero communications out there. We do have some, some various safety pamphlets that we're putting out for biking, walking, and scooting. So you'll see over the summer as we really start to get, as we start to ramp up in this, in this season of people being out and active, that, that we have our message out. So thank you so much, Lori and your group.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Filer?
Thank you, Amy. All right, next on the agenda is the foster care assessment with Public Consulting Group, who's here. So it's my pleasure to call up Stephen Hawks to the podium. Before we get into this, I just want to take a moment to thank Stephen. So as most of you know, this is Stephen's last week. And this has been 40 years of public service. Not all in Norfolk. It would have been great if it was all in Norfolk. But, you know, we've had the privilege of having Stephen here for 10 years. And I got to tell you, one of the very first meetings I had, I remember it vividly. We are out at the Emergency Operations Center for Hurricane, I believe it was Dorian, which thankfully, and I wasn't even on the job yet. I was just sort of observing how this all goes down. Made me sort of second guess a little bit. But, but one of my first interactions was with Stephen. And Stephen walks up to me and says, "It's great to meet you. I'm retiring." And I said, "Okay. That's, that's great. Congratulations." And, but thanks for giving me the heads up and, and all that. So he definitely leaves this city better than, than when he founded. For that, we're eternally grateful, Stephen. And thank you again for everything that you've done. And all the best on, on the next chapter.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. And thank you. Dr. Alexander, members of council, tonight we are here to talk about the foster care assessment. I'm going to use a brief timeline to introduce our guests that will be presenting this report tonight. In December of 2018, the Joint Legislative and Audit Review Commission issued a scathing report on foster care services across the state of Virginia. You may remember that in January of 2019, I came to you with information about how we compared to that statewide report. And the statistics, the state's own statistics show that we are among the top-performing agencies, large agencies in the state. And our performance is well above the statewide averages upon which that J-Log report was based. In March of 2019, there was a news article published, and it contained a number of inaccurate and unsubstantiated accusations. So out of an abundance of caution, in April of 2019, we issued an informal request for proposals to have an external third party to come in and do a complete assessment of our foster care operations. The IRFP went out for bid. We received a number of proposals through the summer. We evaluated those proposals and a vendor was selected. And that vendor is Public Consulting Group, or PCG. They came and spent a lot of time with us through the fall months and performed research using a great number of different techniques, which they will be talking about in just a bit. So tonight, they're here to present their findings, recommendations from the assessment. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Katie Bright, who is the Engagement Manager with PCG. And after PCG completes their report, our Assistant Director Denise Gallup will be coming up and letting you know where we are with implementing recommendations and next steps.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone. We're happy to be here. So at Stephen's, I'm Katie Bright. I'm the Engagement Manager for this project. And Stacy Priest was our Project Manager. And Sarah Sparks was a member of our team. So we're going to sort of tag-team our overview of the project. And I'm just going to give you a little overview about Public Consulting Group, just so you have some background on us. We're a management consulting firm focused on the public sector. We are solely focused on working with state and local agencies. And our work really runs the gamut of education, health, human services, and technology consulting. We have about 2,300 employees with 60 offices nationwide. Our team is specifically from our human services practice area. So we really work with human service populations from birth all the way through aging. We run the gamut from disabilities, aging, child welfare, public assistance. And our work, we do, we do it all. We advise and assess, which is what we've done here. We implement, we outsource, we work with finances. So we really understand this sector well. We specifically work in the child welfare sector. So we've worked with child welfare agencies nationally, both county and city, as well as statewide organizations.
Okay, so as you are aware, NDHS contracted with Public Consulting Group to do a foster care assessment. We looked at practices, policies, procedures in order to complete the assessment. Our overall goal was to analyze the system and identify strengths, challenges, and then provide recommendations based on national best standards. As a result, we generated a report. And in that report, we include our findings, which are the strengths, challenges, and our recommendations. The methodology used for this assessment, we consider a mixed method approach, which uses qualitative and quantitative data, piecing the qualitative and quantitative data together in order to create a picture and understand fully what's going on in the system. So we looked at actual data reports, which the department, and it was, provided us a lot of data for us to review. They were very open with what they provided us. We looked at training materials, practice integrated reports, dashboard, provider contracts. The list is here, but we looked a lot of data. This is actually not everything we looked at. There was even more that was provided to us. We also completed focus groups. So we completed nine focus groups in total. Each of those focus groups consisted of 10 to 15 individuals. And they were broken up by kind of specialty area, I guess. So we had focus groups with family social workers, or FSWs, administrative staff supervisors, court personnel, service providers, foster parents, and then actually foster youth themselves. So if you were an FSW, then you attended a focus group where it was just FSWs. And we directed our questions to the areas or of expertise or their area of concern. We also created three online surveys. So we wanted to collect information and input from more than just those individuals that were able to attend focus groups. So those three surveys were for foster parents, FSWs, and FSW supervisors. And those links to those surveys were given to everyone that was in that role. We also completed case reviews. So case reviews consisted of literally sitting down and looking at the files. So we looked at anything that was in the records that included court hearings, their case plans, visitation logs, what services were they providing, their permanency goals, how many placement changes they may have. And then we documented those factors within each of those cases. So after looking all of this, we collected information. We sorted through it. And we really want to provide strengths to build off of. So we looked at using a strengths-based approach. And we found lots of strengths within the department. One is that there really is a collaborative teamwork among FSWs. So staff really felt like they could go to each other. They also felt they could go to their supervisors. They felt if they didn't know the answer, they had someone within the department that they could go to receive guidance. FSWs consistently meet the target monthly visitation. So the target is that FSWs see their foster child at least once a month. So 90%, 98% of the time, we saw that FSWs were seeing foster children face-to-face, which is very good. We saw regular internal meetings. So internal meetings with your supervisor to pass on information between units, and also executives' teams meeting with staff face-to-face to provide, you know, high-level direction on where the department was going. We also, as part in the focus groups, heard about dictation services that were available, which allows FSWs to get those service logs or their documentation into the system easier and faster and quicker. There's also access to a kids line. So as a case manager, one of the things that you need to do when a child changes placement is you need to get that information updated into the system. And then there's lots of things that need to be updated once a child changes placements. So there's the creation of the kids line, which is, this is not available everywhere. And this is a great access to have this service. Where the FSW can contact someone, let them know there's been a placement change, and then those changes are made in the system. There's also a low number of children in congregate care. So congregate care are children in residential placements or institutions. So there was a less than 5% rate of children in congregate care. And we saw and heard about a strong partnership between the department staff and community providers. So those are our strengths. And now Stacy's going to go over our recommendations.
So as Sarah described, we did a lot of different research and focus groups and surveys, talked with a lot of different staff to come up with these recommendations. And the recommendations that we came up with are similar to what we have seen in other child welfare agencies around the country in doing similar type assessments. And Sarah also mentioned about us reviewing 20 foster care case files. Those are children that are actually in the custody of the city of Norfolk. So we looked at 20 of those files. And as Sarah said, we looked at court documents, different permanency goals and plans, and the case dictation that the FSWs have in the files. And in those files that we looked at, there were no major areas of safety concerns noted. So to jump into our recommendations, we have 10 recommendations that we came up with as a result of our assessment. So the first one is to develop a consistent training and onboarding process. Some of the information that we heard from the FSWs during our focus groups and also information from the surveys talked about just some differences in training among the different units. Maybe depending on, you know, if they were working with children that are more in the home or working with kids that are in foster care. Some FSWs talked about being assigned a mentor and having a person to shadow, a more experienced worker to shadow while they were starting, whereas other units did not have that. So we would recommend that there was a, that an internal team would be developed to take a look at the current training procedures and develop a comprehensive model that's consistent across all of the units so that everyone receives the same type of training and that the workers are fully prepared to go out into the workforce. The second recommendation we came up with was to increase support for the family service workers. In addition to having to see the kids and families all the time, there's also a lot of administrative tasks that they need to do. But of course, the most important part is them sitting down and talking with the child and the families to rectify the situation, keep the children safe, and make sure that they can achieve their permanency goals if a child does come into foster care. So some of the recommendations that we have surrounding that are to hire some additional administrative staff and to, to help the family service workers with some of those tasks that they might have, such as maybe, you know, sending out different letters to parties that can be on a, some sort of like a template letter. Also, something that we're recommending is to combine some of the meetings. There are a lot of meetings that the FSWs need to attend. So in our report, we have suggested that some of those meetings could possibly be combined, which would free up some time for the FSWs. The next recommendation is to build trust between the leadership, staff, and the stakeholders. This could be accomplished through celebrating their successes, offering staff opportunities, encouraging teamwork, offering different supports. This is a very stressful job for the FSWs, if you can even imagine, you know, some of the things that they see. So just different support that could be offered to them. And also for leadership to make sure that they consistently communicate with the staff, things that are going on throughout the agency. Those types of things will help with building trust between the leadership and the staff. The next recommendation is to increase pay to align with other agencies. We heard a lot about this between the surveys and the focus groups, too. There are lower salaries in Norfolk compared to the neighboring... There are lower salaries in Norfolk compared to the neighboring agencies. We hear a lot about the FSWs, you know, will start in Norfolk, and then they'll get trained there, and then they'll leave and go to a neighboring agency and earn a higher salary. So of course, this contributes to the turnover that is in Norfolk. And they have a challenge then with filling those vacancies. Norfolk actually has the highest vacancy rate compared to other local agencies. So they could consider increasing the pay to align with some of the neighboring agencies. That would be helpful with reducing the turnover and being able to fill those vacancies more quickly and therefore hopefully decrease, being able to decrease the caseload some for the family service workers. The fifth recommendation there is related to case transfers between the FSWs. And what we mean by this is the way that the divisions and the units are currently set up in Norfolk, a child and family throughout the course of their case could work with numerous different FSWs throughout their time with the agency. There's an, there could be an intake worker assigned to the case for sixty days. And then if the family, it's identified that they still need further assistance, the family might switch to another worker. And then if the child enters foster care, they will switch to another worker. So we would recommend that the agency explores combining those units some, making it in a way that a child and or family doesn't experience working with so many different FSWs and having to change caseworkers all the time. There's, whenever the case transfers happen, there's of course a period of transition that needs to happen for the child and family to be comfortable with that worker again and for the worker to learn about what's going on with the family. So decreasing the case transfers could help with also moving the cases through the agency a bit more quickly. The next one is to improve some court processes. As it says here, it seems like there are a lot of court continuances, and hearings are just scheduled on an all-day docket. So again, to move kids along and cases along more quickly, we have some recommendations regarding improving those court processes. The next one is about locating kinship placement options timely. So whenever a child enters foster care, the FSW or the agency must reach out and look to see if there are any kinship placements that are available to that child, because of course, it's best for the child to be placed with a relative, if that is possible. So we just want to, we would recommend that a diligent search is completed timely. There was some indication to us that sometimes a child might be in foster care for a period of time before that diligent search for a relative happens. So we're recommending that a quality assurance process we put into place to ensure that that search is completed timely. That way, you know, a child might not start to form a relationship with a foster family and then have to move again.
What is the best practice? What is timely?
I mean, I would recommend as soon as possible. When a child comes into care, that, yeah, the best practice would be to, you know, immediately start asking mom and dad or any relative that you do have contact with. You know, are you able to take this child? Do you know of anyone that might be able to take this child? What is their contact information? Just as soon as possible, get that ball rolling. We also have on here about utilizing a search software. We do see in some other agencies that multiple sources are used, such as like child support searches, things like that, to help locate possible relatives or kinship placement options.
What about when you have one parent and you have the other parent? And so where does establishing paternity with regard to like the DNA or something or another to reach out to? To be able to fully establish kinship and finding a family so that that child can be placed with family and not foster parent? How does that factor into that location of kinship?
Okay. Denise will touch on that. Okay. Okay, just a couple more recommendations to get through here. Increase placements within the city of Norfolk. We did see in some of the statistics that we were provided that there are kids placed outside of the city of Norfolk. Now, I will add that a lot of times, that is still close by. You know, there are neighboring cities that are very close. But it does still result in the children, maybe, you know, having to move to a different community or move to a different school sometimes. So we just would want to make sure that before a child is placed outside of the city of Norfolk that all placement options are explored in the city first and foremost. Also, in talking with the youth during the focus groups with the youth, that they expressed that they are not consistently involved in the case planning process with their FSWs, that the FSWs don't consistently sit with them and talk with them about their goals and recommendations. You know, some reported that they do, and some reported that they don't. So we would just want to also make sure that that is happening consistently, especially for those older youth in the range of like fourteen and older, that the FSW is sitting down with them and getting their feedback and their wishes and what they see as their goals. And finally, increase support for foster parents. Again, a very difficult job. And they expressed a support group would be helpful to them. Some of them also expressed that they don't feel adequately trained to handle children who have experienced severe trauma. So just making sure that they're adequately trained and prepared in that way and have support in dealing with that. Something that could be helpful there is just even developing a mentoring relationships with maybe more experienced foster parents, pairing them up with the less experienced foster parents. So that was a very quick overview of our recommendations. And I think Denise then is gonna talk about some of the implementation then of these recommendations.
Good evening, everybody. So Dr. Alexander and Dr. Philer and this distinguished group of council members, it really is my pleasure to stand before you to talk a little bit about how we will move forward from this point on. Before we go there, though, I just have to publicly acknowledge PCG and the work that they did, because they're coming in independently, looking at our system confirmed and reinforced, the things that we believed about our system, but also some of the efforts that we had already begun. There are times where you can be so close to what's happening in the world of child welfare and/or human services that it could be easy enough for you to get tunnel vision about things like safety and permanency and well-being. But to have an independent organization to come in and really be able to look at our system in a more global way just was refreshing for me, and it was exciting for our staff. And so thank you so much. Every recommendation that PCG offered, we agree with one hundred percent. We know that there are strengths within our system that we believe are excellent, that in many cases surpass other departments and other systems. But we also know that there is room to grow and room to take things to the next level. So there were a few things that PCG talked about, and I just wanted to give you just some ideas of where we are and where we're going in those areas. You heard them talking consistently about the administrative support that should be offered, if you can, to our family service workers. We certainly recognize that it is a tough job to have. And so we are, we have already begun to realign the resources that we have internally already to provide some of those things. We have several new and exciting positions that are posted right now, and those positions are directly connected to quality assurance and utilization review, and the connection between the actual work of the face-to-face contacts that have to happen for young people, and how do we connect that in a more seamless way with the amount of documentation that's required. Another area that was emphasized by PCG just relates to the efforts of ensuring that we first make sure that there are not family members. And when I say family now, I'm talking about blood family or kinship families who are there and are available and willing in order to take our young people. In many cases, we start off with what we call a diligent search. The state has offered us a tool. In order to do that, we ask the family members, the parents, right at the time, even before young people enter foster care, we ask them specifically about relatives that may be willing to take the child so that they don't have to come into care. And sometimes the parents give us all of that information, and sometimes they don't, because their own family members may not even know the detail of what's happening in the lives of their immediate family. And so having more sophisticated search engines certainly will help us. We've begun already to look at some of the models that are connected to best practice work through Child Welfare League of America. And we've also really taken that time right up front to say we need to establish paternity. Sometimes there are several fathers that may have been offered, but it really is our job to ensure that each one of those people are vetted. Because what we know is that there are relatives on both sides of a family. Every time we have a goal change, primary goal for young people is reunification. That means that they will return back with the family that they came from. But in many cases, when that doesn't happen, we have to think about changing that goal. When that's the case, once again, we begin that diligent search all over again. And in some cases, we have family members that we did not know about previously. And so Councilwoman Graves, I hope that kind of answered your question, but I'm willing to go into more detail as you need me to. And so for us, that is really important. And then another topic that PCG touched on that probably is my favorite part of the assessment that you all saw is the involvement, the engagement that happened with the young people, our teens. In many cases, our teens share lots of information with us, and they want to talk to us. But there are times where they may not necessarily want to talk with the FSW or any other person connected to the case. So we've already begun to brainstorm about this concept that's called "nothing for us without us." And what we would do is intentionally engage that young person. And even when we get to the place where we don't know exactly what they will say, we still recognize that what they have to offer us is going to be helpful. We'll be building into our service plans that are submitted to the court and all of our reporting, a section that will be named in the youth's own words. And then that way, if nothing else, it will be very transparent to all exactly what the young person thinks and believes about. Do I want to return to my birth family? Am I more interested in going to college versus going in the military? But all of those things will be explored and clearly documented in the perspective of the young person. So those are just a few of the things that we've either already begun or, again, we're pretty jazzed about starting. I also have to let you know that our staff, they were involved in this one hundred percent PCG intentionally, or maybe unintentionally, I'm not sure, left out Steve and I and some of the upper managers. And they went straight in to talk to the people who do the work for the kids and families every day. And because of that, the staff also feels that their voices have been heard and that the actions or the recommendations that we intend to implement really will make the system greater for all, for the staff, for the young people, for their families, and then for the system overall. So I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have, either directly connected to the recommendations that you heard or any other question.
Sir, while we're taking questions, sir, James Rogers is gonna pass out a hard copy form the executive summary of the report. The full report is eighty-some plus pages, in the interest of not killing trees. It's on our website, so you're free to go to that. But this is a hard copy of the executive summary.
So a quick question. One of the recommendations in terms of reducing the number of FSWs that a person... So I'm gonna assume that that will be, or figure that that will be tied into helping those young people who are not as open to talk, to talk, because they're now feeling more comfortable and they don't necessarily feel like they're per... So why should I open up if you're not gonna be here in three months?
Absolutely.
And so that would help them.
It would most definitely help them, but not just them, just for overall consistency in the approach that is taken from the very beginning to the very end. We have certain things that become a standardized form of practice, such as adoption, where there are lots of details and lots of documents that have to be done. And what we have already begun, as opposed to removing that primary caseworker or that primary FSW, we've assigned a secondary adoption worker or independent living worker, or whatever the specific area of need is, assign that person to do those pieces so that the family and the young people will have their consistent case manager through the life of the case.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I know that works a lot.
It's hard work, but it's also hard work. And because of that, we have to really think through. I love another recommendation. I'm sorry, I just have to throw this out there. When you said it, it made me think about it. This whole concept of making sure that our foster parents, making sure that our staff are trained in trauma-informed practice, but also that we offer support to them in the form of debriefings, in the form of secondary trauma training. How do you take care of yourself as you then are required to take care of so many other people? As you also have to figure out, do you do this paperwork? Or do you respond to this kid and family? And staying fresh and staying energized and being able to talk about the things that you've seen and you've heard and you've had to perform is a way of doing that. And so that was, that was also a thing that I thought was awesome.
Ms. Johnson? I just have a few things. One, let me begin by saying thank you to the foster care department for the presentation. I see this as being a part of guidelines and setting new policies for the foster care department here in the city of Norfolk. So I thank you for that. One of my questions would be, is it recommended by the PCG group to do a follow-up to continue checks and balances of the new policies that we're going to implement here in the city of Norfolk?
I mean, I would say we always would recommend some CQI process so that once we make recommendations like that, we see it through and that is a continuous process.
And the reason I ask that is because, so that there would not be any for the questions about how our foster care department works in the city of Norfolk, that we continue the new policies that we're, and guidelines that we're putting into place. And lastly, if the hard copy that we just received on the foster care assessment, which includes PCG's report, I would also recommend that we receive a follow-up or a report based on the implementations and recommendations that you just presented to the city council. If we could have that electronically and or hard copy, that would be our... If we could have that uh electronically um and/or hard copy, that would be our documentation for the foster care.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We've already begun a plan.
I I I do. I made note of all the things that you mentioned um based on um the consideration from PCG. Um, my recommendation is that we just get it um electronically and on file.
Yes, ma'am. As soon as possible or?
Yes.
Okay.
At 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 in a timely manner. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I think to be clear, what what they're asking are the ones that you just mentioned right now. And then, obviously, I think we yeah. So, we 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 clearly is, the administration is clearly making a commitment to council that as other things come along that we will bring um someone from the foster care program back uh and and talk about some of the other measures that are taken.
Because you mentioned some good um implementations of your recommendations based on PCG's report. And yes, we just wanna get that down.
Awesome. Our fantastic foster care programs manager is in the room. She hates to be put on the spot and I'm not doing it other than I just want you to see her. But she has already developed a three-page implementation plan that we were able to give to uh Mr. Rogers and to Dr. Filer and our other deputies earlier. And so, it's easy enough for us to send that to you immediately.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Denise.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawks, and to PCG. Congratulations.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Stephen. Thank you, PCG, for all for all the work. Uh, last thing in the open session tonight, sir, is uh Rob Cross, who's with us, uh the executive director and Perry Artistic Director for the Virginia Arts Festival. Um, he's gonna talk to us uh quickly about the Addicts One Hundred. Sorry, Rob, but we got we got a full agenda uh and to talk and give us a a a little whet the appetite, if you will, on the twenty twenty Virginia Arts Festival.
Good afternoon. Thank you, uh Mayor Alexander, Dr. Filer, and members of council. So, I'm gonna give you a a brief wrap-up of the Addicts One Hundred celebration, a preview of the upcoming theater festival, and a preview of the upcoming Virginia Arts Festival. Uh, first, I would like to um bring greetings from Anthony Stockard. Uh, Anthony was the co-chair with Norfolk Theater Festival, this coming theater festival. He planned on being here tonight, but something came up at the last minute. Norfolk State University was not able to get away. So, uh Anthony took the lead on coordinating with all of our local theater groups for the theater festival. We have a really, really vibrant um lineup this year. Um, almost all the theater companies that claim Norfolk as their home are participating. So, in your brochure, in your packet, you should have this year's brochure for the theater festival um and some of the promotional materials that go along with it. Um, some of the things that I think are exciting about this year, um first, I want to brag about Anthony's show from Norfolk State. All the performances are already sold out and ticket sales are going well for the other productions. Um, several of the arts organizations are doing additional events, uh pre-concert conversations or post-concert talkbacks. Core Theater is doing a masterclass and the Harrah Players and the Little Theater of Norfolk are doing free children's activities. Uh, the brochures you have here are in all the visitor centers throughout the state of Virginia and they're being direct mailed to Charlottesville, Richmond, and northeast North Carolina. Um, the marketing materials you'll see, start seeing around town if you haven't already, a light rail wrap. Uh, we're on the doors of MacArthur Center and posters throughout the building and there's Waterside Drive LED board. Um, and then, we have
At the second annual Norfolk Theater Festival, there is so much to applaud, March third through eighth. You'll find shows and events guaranteed to intrigue and entertain. Great shows to choose from, plus Norfolk's award-winning restaurants and hotels to make your getaway even more unforgettable. At the second annual Norfolk Theater Festival, there is so much to applaud, March third through eighth. You'll find shows and events guaranteed to intrigue and entertain. Great shows to choose from, plus Norfolk's award-winning restaurants and hotels to make your getaway even more unforgettable. The second annual Norfolk Theater Festival. Plan your theater adventure today at NFKTheater.org.
And this TV spot will run in Richmond, throughout Hampton Roads, and on the City Channel.
Can you read it in Charlotte, uh Charlotte, North Carolina as well?
Um, I want to thank Alex from my staff who uh is leading the marketing effort on this and put all these materials together. So, thank you, Alex. Uh, next, um, quick wrap-up of the Addicts One Hundred celebration. Um, it was really, really fantastic twelve-month period. Again, Anthony was the co-chair of this. Uh, and I also want to thank John Ramstein and the Seven Venues team who who helped with this in terms of marketing and managing the budget and the scheduling. In your packet, you'll see a brochure that we created. Uh, there was nothing that existed that told the history of the building, so we wanted a something that lasted past the one year, the one-hundredth anniversary celebration. So, economic development and Visit Norfolk has this when they're promoting the city and telling the story of Norfolk since the Addicts is such an important part of that history. So, this piece, we have plenty of extra copies of this. Some live here at City Hall, some live at uh Visit Norfolk, and if you need additional copies, just let us know. Um, again, uh Anthony was our co-chair for the year and many of you were at many of these events. I'll just go a quick uh pass-through of the events that happened during the year. Fantastic how the building be so busy during this period, really bringing in some truly world-class artists to Norfolk and to the Addicts Theater, but also showcasing some of the organizations that call Norfolk home. And I'll be happy to um give you more detailed information about any of that if you'd like to have it later. Um, I think another exciting part was where people came from for the Addicts Celebration. Um, we had visitors from, um, I think it was seventeen states um throughout the year and really great press. Sorry. Um, that's just a a small taste of the press that happened during the year. And then, finally, um, for the sake of time, I'm gonna give you a quick overview of this year's festival. Um, we always have great, great things to share with you. We have some bad news to report tonight. I'll say that first. Um, so, we are um one of the victims of what's going on in the world today with the coronavirus. So, we are announcing this afternoon sadly that um the Hong Kong Ballet's national tour is being canceled or postponed, I should say. They were the opening weekend of the festival. We had four performances. Um, it was very, very well-supported and ticket sales were going great. Um, it's as um, you know, incredibly inconvenient and hard for the festival, we will manage this in a good way. Um, but I think I'd need to point out how devastating it is for the company. Um, thinking dancers' careers are typically ten to twelve years in length and the Hong Kong Ballet has basically lost an entire season. They lost almost their entire fall and winter season due to the um protest and the civil unrest and now they're losing their entire uh winter-spring tour. Um, so, the company can't rehearse in their own building because it's a government building. Uh, so, they're having to find other space to rehearse to try to keep the dancers fit. So, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Um, and we will bring bring them back. They are committed to coming back to the festival, so we'll have them in a future season. But, moving on to now what will be opening night, Collage Dance Collective, fantastic uh young African-American dance company. Uh, you saw some of these dancers last year because they joined Dance Theater Harlem for the big celebration with last year at Dance Theater Harlem. They'll be here for a full week. Uh, the two-student matinees are already sold out and ticket sales for the evening performance are doing great and they'll be in our schools doing workshops and master classes during that week. Um, uh, something a little fun, a little different, we are showing the uh movie Sound of Music in its entirety with subtitles and the audience is invited to participate and come in costume. Uh, I will say the ticket sales are going fantastic. I've been told to expect some very interesting costumes, um but it it should be a lot of fun. So, I hope you join us. That'll be at Chrysler Hall. Uh, Tattoo, um obviously, one of the anchor events of the festival. Um, we have over a thousand people in the cast this year. Um, and seven countries are represented in the cast this year.
The largest spectacle of music and might in the United States, the Virginia International Tattoo, offers an astounding display of inspirational military music, majestic masked pipes and drums, showstopping drill team maneuvers, colorful and elegant dancers, and much, much more. The Virginia International Tattoo performs live, April thirtieth to May third, twenty twenty, at Scope Arena in Norfolk, Virginia. Information and tickets at VAFest.org.
So, we have seven performances, three student matinees that are pretty much sold out, and then four public performances. Um, a couple of things I'm excited about, uh the Kingdom Choir that making their festival debut. You probably have seen them and didn't know it. They sang at the Royal Wedding for who used to be Royals. Um, so, they got worldwide attention there and they sang Star Spangled Banner at the Red Sox Yankee game when they played in England last year. Um, Sean Colvin is celebrating the thirtieth anniversary of her breakout album, Steady On, and that was one who I think her first Grammy. Um, so, she's playing that album in its entirety. I'm happy to say that performance is already sold out. And this fantastic, this is a new production. This is a world premiere production called The Black Mozart, a really, really interesting figure, someone who was born in the islands of a slave mother and a military aristocrat whose history was erased. He was raised in Italy, um was actually a roommate with Mozart, wrote incredible body of music that disappeared with him and is now being rediscovered and being performed. So, we have a production that tells the story of his life with a really fantastic cast and it features a young violinist from this area who's a remarkable young student that's at the uh Curtis Institute of Music. Um, we have a three-week exhibit at the MacArthur Center of the Images from the Sistine Chapel, um that we're taking one of the spaces on the second floor. That'll be open the hours that the center are open. And then, uh, something I'm very excited about, Live From Here, which is the production that replaced Garret Zekiel's Prairie Home Companion, that will be in Chrysler Hall broadcast nationwide. The show is aired on sixty stations, I mean, sorry, six hundred stations around the world and has a a weekly audience of two-point-six million listeners. So, for that two-hour broadcast that will originate here in Norfolk, they'll be talking about the Virginia Arts Festival and the city of Norfolk. Uh, we are participating in the two-hundredth anniversary worldwide celebration of birth of Beethoven. We'll have an exhibit at Slover Library and we're doing three performances of of Beethoven's Ninth Symphony. Those happen to be the final concerts of Joanne Philet as music director of the Virginia Symphony. And it's Oga Kern, who is the director of our chair music and the bank Claver, Van Cliver Gold Medalist. It's her debut with the Virginia Symphony. And then, finally, I uh one of the things I'm also very excited about, uh Anthony Stocker is bringing back alumni of Norfolk State University who are now working professionally around the country, either in film, theater, or TV and doing uh production of the Soldier's Play. He was lucky enough to get the rights of this before it was announced that it was going back on Broadway. So, he'll do a week run of that over at Norfolk State University as part of the festival. And then, Bale of Fleck and the Flecktones are also celebrating their thirtieth anniversary and they'll be at the Harrison Opera House. And finally, uh, we already have ticket buyers from forty states already confirmed for this year, so hotels will be very busy during the festival. And then, the Rhythm Project, uh which is our year-round education program, working with uh Title One schools. I'm happy to say that as we speak, they're safely on a plane. We had twenty students that were invited to to Panorama in Trinidad. They've been there for ten days participating in the competition and seven of them were invited to be in the finals. Um, so, they will be back with us to celebrate and hopefully they'll all get in safely tonight. And we already have a hundred and two education events scheduled during this year's festival. Um, all the Norfolk Public School students will attend one of our matinees and all the sixth graders will attend the Tattoo. So, that's a really quick overview. Happy to answer any questions now or you can follow up to me later.
All right. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Chip, is that all you have?
That's all we've got for the open session.
All right, Tommy, who wants to give an update?
Yes, just real quick. Um, Kurt Kraus is one of the members of the gaming committee and in our discussions originally talking about gray machines, um he had offered, he has funding thirty thousand dollars to um conduct a study of the impact of casinos or the gray machines in Norfolk. Um, now that gray machines may be going away, uh the uh committee uh spoke yesterday. We had our another meeting. Um, and he he has the approval from his board to go ahead and move forward with this, but uh Councilwoman Johnson and I felt that it was necessary for all of council to know um that we've recommended that he use the thirty thousand to study the impact of the casino on the city of Norfolk from economic development to tourism to uh uh social issues, um as well as the impact on small businesses, um because that was one of the concerns. And so, um if the gray machine topic does come back, um there may be a request from the committee to ask for additional funding uh to support the study because we don't think thirty thousand would be enough. And he does have a company already on uh board that specializes in this. Um, and our goal is to have this information out um in time for the summer for us, our gaming committee, to do a public meeting to present the information. And I know Dr. Filer is also working on some studies and um has some information that will be provided to us, uh but we wanted to give you that quick update. Councilwoman Johnson, did I forget anything?
Um, no, other than um the administrative team coming to the gaming um committee to present in April or May um with some of the things that you found um so that we'll be on board. And also, with the gray machines, um that we're at a stand hole and so, we're not looking for any type of decision to be made um until June sometime.
And then, also, sports betting is back on the table with this and so, there could be an additional impact with that because it's part one of the three bills that still um survived um in going through that. So, we'll have some information which could also change some of with our casino where it's allowed, who would be allowed to do that, where the proceeds go to. So, we'll have some information as that means word and that could also require additional study um as well.
Good.
First of all, thanks. I'm glad, really glad y'all are doing that. I worry that thirty thousand dollars sounds like a small amount of money for such a large study, so we need to supplement that. My 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 concern is the timing. I think it all worked out fine, that it's out sometime early, late summer, early fall, so that if there's a
Voting.
The vote on the referendum in November. Okay.
That's what we discussed. That's our goal is to do some kind of meeting in the summer to announce what our committee has researched, studied, and um present that so there's time for citizens to make a informed decision on it.
Wonderful. You're doing the work of the committee. Thank you so much. That's the purpose of the committee. All right.
Right.
Just a bull.
With the members of the council assembly in Congress being on February twentieth, twenty twenty, at six oh one PM, the fourth floor conference room, the city hall building in the city of Norfolk for a purpose of not sure. Just set out in clause three, subsection A of section two-point-two, just thirty-seven eleven, Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended. Three, discussion of the acquisition of property for a public purpose in the military highway area where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position. And three, again, discussion of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargain position in the downtown area. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Holland?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?